Good evening, everybody. It's 7 o'clock. This meeting is being televised by Area 58. And we have a full-member board tonight. And we will start with petition number 997.
Petition number 997 for 22 Madison Road. It's an application for a building permit to construct a 12-foot by 48.5-foot addition to a single-family residence. Variance of the side yard setback requirement from 30 feet to 3.5 feet as this project would be in violation of the Califex zoning section 167-11 table of dimensional and density regulations.
You want to tell us what you want to do?
Yeah, so we want the addition. I think we also wanted... Did everyone say anything? Yeah, so we want to put an addition on one. We are looking to put in another bathroom. My wife and I spend a lot of time working from home, mostly in the morning for her before she sets out to her DM studio. And I get to work from home three out of the five days a week. So an office space would be ideal. And the big thing for us too, for the addition, is more for our daughter Charlie because she requires occupational therapy, physical therapy, and speech therapy. And she does have equipment. The equipment right now is like in our living room, so it's kind of tight. And if we were able to open up a little bit, you know, that would give her and all of us actually a little bit more room for her equipment and us to like be able to walk around. And also just so, you know, we do want to be considerate. We're working with our contractor. You know, the windows on that side are going to be up very high, very thin, not your traditional window. So like no one's going to be able to see in or out. Sold for business strictly for sunlight. And then the other thing that we had talked about was putting in a small gate so the dogs can't go on that small piece of side yard. They'll have to go on the other side. You know, that's what we're looking at for right now. And it's pretty much it.
You're asking for a variance from 30 feet to 3.5 feet?
On one side, yeah. Because our house, if you look at the plan, is on an angle. So it's like the way it goes would be seven feet from one side, three and a half to the other. So it would kind of, it would look straight, but if you look at the plan, it's crooked.
Is there any way you can put it somewhere else? Because you, is there a, you know?
There's not because on the other side is our septic and we chill. And that other side is like, we call it sand. We can't grow grass on that side. It's very sandy, very dirty, very soft. And septic system there, it wouldn't be ideal to put outside.
Do we have a plot plan? Is it on this one? Sincerity, nonconforming.
Yes, nonconforming. What's on the other side of you?
On the other side of the other house?
Yeah.
On the right-hand side?
It's basically probably like six feet, if that, but it's, that's where, you know, all like the septic system or the heat shield is at.
No, no, no. Were you asking for the 3.5 feet?
Oh, there's nothing there.
What's over here?
Nothing there. It says us in the, to the fact.
Another, somebody else's property?
Yes.
When you own the house.
This is existing.
So where's the septic on this?
So the septic, so if we're looking, septic is right here, shelter right here. Because this is the front of the house. So septic here, that's true.
That's just the black line. The black line, it's not your left line.
So there is a house on the right-hand side?
If you're looking at the house, yes.
Can you talk to me about this?
There.
Basically, this is what we're going to have. The offices. One office, right? Well, you already have offices and you're...
This is, this is the new garden.
This is the new apartment here?
Yeah, so if you come in, so this is a bedroom. This will be an office.
Ah, you're going to change everything?
Yeah, so the living room here, so this is the majority of like our daughter's equipment. So we're able to extend.
And go in this?
Yes. And then the bathrooms, we, like I said, we only have the one bathroom. And if we can put in another one, we don't have pantries or any of that stuff. But that bedroom would be coming off.
An office, okay. Two, three bedrooms.
So right now, it's a three-bedroom.
We already have three, I believe, same.
Yeah.
I mean, our daughter, just, you know, she does have a birth diagnosis of Down syndrome. So she, you know, she does have special needs. So we just, as she's growing, she just requires more, you know?
And as you can see, she needs a lot of room. She's going running around.
You know, as my friend.
They already have 30 feet.
They have 30 feet, yeah.
What would be the distance between the fence there?
Uh, three and a half.
Three and a half?
Yeah. And then seven on the other.
On the other side.
I think they, I think we have...
Yeah.
So it looks straight.
It looks like the most they have. I mean, they must have 15.
This is 15.5.
Yeah.
So you never had 30 feet from your side lot line?
No.
No, we bought the house, that's why.
There's no, there's no normal plots in that neighborhood. None. There's none. Like the one down near the corner store that just sold. You go up to their deck.
Yeah.
One part of their deck is like a yard. The other part of the deck, you could touch the fence, which is like the property line.
So the letter, the letter should have read that it's an extension.
Yeah, I was just thinking the same thing. Do we have what's advertised?
Yeah, they're looking, so it's basically the same thing. It's, they need a variance for that setback. But just what it is under the bylaws actually.
But you're extending the nonconforming.
Yeah. They didn't have 30 feet to be given. So like you mentioned, the lots are already too small. So you didn't, you already didn't have the 30 feet that you needed.
Right, we know, yeah, what we called, we found that out.
Yeah, so the letter really should have said that it was 167-8 and it was extension to nonconforming use. But it's all the same because it's, the variance in the setback is all advertised correctly, right?
I don't know what was advertised.
It's a double jeopardy now.
Were they advertised?
Because they didn't have it at the beginning.
Whether it's advertised as a variance or advertised as a nonconforming extension, then results the same. You'd go from 30 to three and a half.
Yeah, what's in there, the feet?
So the hardship still exists no matter what?
Right, whether you're extending it or taking it, that's, that's still a variance.
The size of a lot.
So the two offices, are there existing bedrooms now?
No, we don't have any.
We don't have any, they're all bedrooms.
We work in the dining room.
Right, but they're bedrooms now?
Yeah. Yeah, the first one we would like to put into an office.
Also, it's totally a house and works well now, you know? I use the dining room right now.
Are there other houses? I can't think of them, but there may be. Are there other houses in that neighborhood that are three and a half feet off of the side setback?
There are some, I got one that's less than two feet.
Yeah, we have some that are.
And then we know that someone has got to prove to put in an in-law house across, like next street over. And it's like within a property line, so. So there's like, yeah, a lot of the houses are pretty close.
Our house has three lots in the corner of one of them. The property line literally goes to the corner of my house. So if I go out, it literally is the corner of my house. So there's no, it's just the way, because they were all...
Cottage, yes, cottages.
Excuse me. Are we, as the abutting neighbors, allowed to speak on our behalf?
We'll get to that.
Understood, thank you.
What's your comment?
This is one starting to start one.
It's just hard because honestly, we can't afford to get a bigger house, so.
Can you go up and all?
We can't. We don't, you know, one, afford it, and two, we need more like actual floor, one space for our daughter. We need her open, like she can't be alone, you know what I mean? And we need to be, so a bigger living space for her to have her stuff. So we can, like, our office is going to have its own front doors. We have to be open to see her all the time.
It's easier, everything on one floor.
It is.
It also is easier. I'd be concerned about stairs because...
Well, it'd be easier for me too because like our piece of box is actually in the basement. The park is not going to go outside, use bulkhead. With this plan, we'll have like stairs that are inside the house, so I can go into the basement.
I'll be 100% honest that I, if, I don't want to be anybody probably sitting up here and speak for anybody else, but I don't think anyone sitting up here that doesn't think you have compelling cases to have that addition. I think what we're all processing is to make sure that we make a decision that is legal for you. Nah, it could be years where the people disagreeing with whatever the heck you're building and bringing you to the land court, and then it could be a nightmare for you. So what we want to do is try and process how we can do this the right way and not create any more hell for you than...
No, it's okay. I think...
Go through the process.
Yeah, we understand that. I think with our daughter getting older and requiring more equipment, you know, it's just, we're learning as we go. So it's, you know, if you saw a learning type with a lot of thought.
I certainly don't want to be in the way of the plans that you have, so.
I can be a car wheel now.
I just want you to know, like, I know whatever is going to be said, but we are being respectful of the neighbors and like we are definitely putting the windows up. Right now, I can see right through their house where we are. I don't like it, they probably don't love it. If you will have those windows, it'll all be gone, which is good. I know we'll be a little closer. We also don't care for our dogs, so that'll be, they won't even be there anymore either. You know what I mean? So we are trying to think of that because I know we have them on one side, the other side, we don't have anybody. The people in the back don't, they support us, they're fine with it. But like, we are trying our best to, we don't want to argue with anybody.
Yeah, they are, yeah, neither.
In a nice, peaceful way. Hi, little.
Come on, you just jump out there.
I'm just processing.
What do you think?
All right. It's a very tough situation, so you don't want to go and say, yes, go forward. And then, as you mentioned, later on creating more problems for you, and which could be. So I think we need to take that under consideration and, you know, go through a few details and consultation before we come with a decision that will be fair for, for her and in a lot of ways.
Can I just ask not to be silly, but like what do you mean?
It's very hard to give a variance of this, you know, three, three feet away from the other paper presence of our park. The hardship is self-inflicted. It, you don't have, you know, if it was a deep slope or, you know, that's the only place where you could put that on the property, that would be a different thing, you know? But you can also figure this whole thing out, you know, do something different with the design of the house.
Well, we can't go on the other side, and the back would be the worst of all.
So to your, so the, the legal issue that might present itself, I don't, I think we need to spend more time with that.
Yes.
So the legal issue that presents itself is by state law, we can't issue a variance to the existing bylaw. So to your point, some of those houses in that neighborhood were probably built before 1976, so they didn't have to follow any of these bylaws.
Grandfathered.
And so they're all grandfathered in there, which is what, when I mentioned it's a nonconforming use, it probably predates the bylaw. So the issue now is that we have, when we have the bylaw, we can't just vary it for a worthy cause. We can only vary it if there are certain criteria there. So some of those are a financial hardship if we made you follow the bylaw, some of it's topography of the land. There's, there's a couple, there's only a finite three or four things that you can actually grant a variance for. And that's, I think, what we need to spend some time looking at. If we granted you that variance and it didn't meet one of those criteria, it could be, it could be a legal nightmare because people can appeal that, they can bring it to land court, it could be all of them. But part of what we need to figure out, I think, is that, is that answer. So if we just, you know, if we just granted that variance without finding that hardship, it wouldn't stand up necessarily at land court. And that's, I think, what we're...
We need to like take it under, you know?
I have one question. All the eyes are on somebody, somebody can't do that layer. And if somebody bought a house and they decided to hide it, they could literally maybe come and tear down the other house and, you know? So they're just trying to make sure.
Or just years and years of legal crap, which is unpleasant.
Well, we would like to, we would like to go, you know, over with a, you know, counsel and all that stuff. To see what avenue we can take before we render a decision on this thing. And that protects us and it'll protect you. And we can, we can schedule another meeting for next month. And while we go over it, we can give you a valid decision when, when, where to go.
Should we do a site visit before our next meeting? I think that would be good.
That would be great.
What's that?
A site visit.
A site visit? We can make a post-site visit. Would you be considered if we do an onsite inspection?
They'd like you to do a layout with this. Go and put the septic plant with us, so we consider that hardship for me too.
Yeah, just mark the space, you know, mark it with, you know, sticks that we're, that we're going to, you know, we'll be down there looking at it.
I have one question. Why wouldn't us, why wouldn't it go through like the three and a half space or, because it's like seven feet in front, I mean, the house is on an angle, right? It's to no one's fault. I mean, they all build a, who cares, right? But, uh, so if it goes down to three and a half, if that was like, say, five from the lot line, would that make a difference?
It's still a variance. We have to, you know, you have to have a hardship for a variance.
Yeah, it's any extension, so, yeah, any extension for a variance. Well, that's what we need to figure out.
We have to figure that out before we...
I'm just, I'm just under contract.
No, I think it's a valid question. That's what, that's what all of this guy hinges.
We're trying to protect all, everybody here. When you get the permit.
You have to also remember, it's not the neighbor's fault that they can't afford to allow. So now their neighbors are going to have the house right in the slum, so it's definitely not good.
Safety issue for the not going up.
Would you like to speak to it?
I was going to say, maybe if you put something together that shows the financial differences between going up and going to the side, and then being able to show hardship that way.
If you, if you can just say, hey, you know, contract or whoever, what does it going to cost me to go up a second floor? Or just the way it is right now? If the hardship is too great for me to go up, then...
I mean, if we would have to double the size of what we're asking for now, so obviously you don't need, so like the price would have to spend double.
You know, just give us a change for, to read this out.
It's also more than that, it's more like I said, to have the wonderful, my daughter.
The space.
She's what's important for me, so I just...
No, we understand where you're coming from.
That's all, I don't, I just...
We're not just great.
I mean, if we could make it right, it's still would be like...
No, you know, we'll try to figure...
That's why we finally bought the house because it was the one I wanted.
We'll try to figure out...
She runs around a lot. It's, you know, she doesn't always pay attention to how she's running. So stairs or a smaller room would... huh?
Why don't you give us a chance to read this out? And there will be a meeting in April 8 for the next meeting. And we'll schedule an onsite inspection.
Just paint the sticks, lay it out, I'll paint the stick red.
Yeah, so we can't see. Do you want to have a phone call with you?
Do you motion for the onsite?
Yeah, just a week, yeah, just the Saturday before.
So make a motion for an onsite visit before 6. Does Nadine even mark for you?
Anybody for a second?
I'm marking.
It's separate for you on the action. I think I'm aware of competition, I will be on anyway, so as long as you stay, I'll change it.
It's all onsite. How are you?
Before 6, I can come and see it before, as I think.
You good for an onsite?
Yeah.
Peter?
Yeah.
You need a second.
My second.
A second.
Well, we'll be on the onsite inspection, then we'll go from there. Thank you.
Get what is?
What?
You don't want, yeah, that's what I want to see.
I mean, we're going to have an onsite, so next, next time we meet, you can...
I want my hearing.
Want to hear on that? Okay.
Thank you.
Who would like to speak to it?
We are Scott and Angela Bell of 22 Madison Road. We've lived there for 20, sorry, for 14 years. This proposed addition directly lets our property, we have serious concerns. Thank you for allowing us to voice our strong objections to this proposed deviation from established variance and zoning ordinances as proposed by the Blankenbergs. When the Blankenbergs purchased this property and their daughter was five months old, they knew of the in-depth health conditions that their daughter had and should have anticipated their daughter's age. She needed to have several heart surgeries. She was already diagnosed with Down syndrome when I met them the first time. I learned all of this.
Just with respect, though, you don't really...
I'll clarify to you, the health concerns of anybody living in that home is going to have no effect.
No, I think we discussed.
Understood, I appreciate that.
So it might not be worth it.
Understood. The proposed addition will certainly have an adverse effect on our limited privacy we've already had for now. Both of our homes are built out to 15 feet allowance, allowed variance ordinances on the close side to Blankenberg's. We hear a lot of noise from their house because our houses are so close together. We hear her having her dance lessons in the house, we hear a lot going on over there. We are very close together already. This proposed addition will place our family and our home in direct danger of safety due to the increased fire risk. Both of our homes have gas furnaces, and we have gas cooking and gas laundry on our main living floor. These ordinances were put in place to keep people's homes a safe distance apart from each other so that in the event of a fire, the surrounding homes are protected by the distance created naturally by adhering to the existing ordinances. If this proposal is approved and there is a fire or a home explosion at the Blankenbergs' home, our home and our lives will be put in grave danger. We have serious concerns of catastrophic risks to our home and our lives. We strongly urge this board to take into consideration that we vehemently oppose this proposed addition because of the dire safety concerns, additional loss of privacy, and the fact that we simply don't want this proposed addition to move forward. And we'll answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Anybody else wants to speak to this?
I think it's a personality conflict.
What's that?
That's not all.
It was a personality conflict.
Personality has nothing to do with safety.
When I did, I argued that.
Understood.
We'll see you as on the onsite inspection. Thank you.
Motion to continue the meeting till...
Motion to continue the meeting till...
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Will we be required to be at the next meeting or not?
What's that?
Will we be required to be at the next meeting or not?
You can come to the next meeting.
It's up to you.
The April 8 is up to you.
Will we need to voice our complaints again, our argument again?
No, you can do it anyway.
It's up to you, honey.
Will we have to be notified at the next meeting?
April 8.
7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me go 1 to 9 then you?
Nice, nice.
Next time, yeah. I'm writing up my name, right?
Moving on to petition number 998, 22 Martry Drive. It's an application for a proposed 655 square feet in-law addition to the right side of the existing home. An in-law addition will require a special permit as well as a variance for front setback from Larry Avenue. Home is located on a corner lot and 50 feet setback is required from all front of the streets. It will need the sequele of 38.5 feet.
We think that might be a take all on the building inspectors.
Oh. At the time, yeah.
So the certified plot plan that we provided shows 15.5 feet in the mudroom.
The sequele?
And 23.2 to the main part of the addition have a fire.
We think you just have a nice...
Okay.
Do you want to, do you have a coffee?
Sure. In raw, so, hold on. This is a street?
And it's a street, yeah.
22 Martry Drive.
Yeah, they want to go down to 15.5.
Is that too far from Madison?
All right. Tell us what you want to do.
So we want to do a in-law apartment from another one on that side. Obviously, you know, it's not that as the previous because those neighborhoods run over, you know, in small ones. So to try to do something, you know, we're... Hey, Peter, what's advertised? Is it correct? It's got to be corrected, right?
Yeah, I mean, unless it's less, we can approve less, we can't approve more. So, yeah, it says, a relief of thirty point five, so it's asking for a variance of nineteen
point five.
Which, no, that's okay, right?
No. Because you're asking fifteen point five.
So it's fifty foot setback up in Larry Avenue, right? It's supposed to be, and they're, they're gonna have fifteen point five.
Which is like thirty-four point five.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Cause this is already, it's only the addition on this side that they're, that it's...
Yeah, that should only work.
Yeah, cause this is already, this is already there. Yeah, I think you're...
It's gonna be re-advertised.
I think you're right.
Even though we provided that plot plan? Yeah, because everybody is reading that.
The notice is, yeah.
Can we correct it here? I think it's gonna be re-advertized.
From all four of the streets, we will now need to...
Thirty point five? So we have what, nineteen point five?
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure where that number came from. Thirty point five.
I don't know if he was looking at something else, maybe?
Yeah, I don't even...
Yeah, I was like, who was it, the best experience?
It took forever just to get to that.
I did not know that.
So, I mean, without, I'm not sure what this is, but without that...
What's that?
It's a shed.
The shed area?
No.
That's, that's just a mudroom.
So, I mean, twenty-three point two, we, like, we can approve that, I guess, if that's what we're looking at, but that's within thirty.
This is the whole addition right here, right? Past the mudroom?
Yeah, that's just the shed area, it's just an existing shed. It's a shed.
That's a shed, no, the shitty area?
That's a shed, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Can I see?
So it'd be coming closer, so this shed would be moved.
Oh, you would move the shed?
This is the shed.
So you drove car, like, suppose, or something like that?
Yeah.
Fifteen point five is, okay. We only have the issue from this one, not from this side. So Marjory Street, would us that...
That's a good one, yeah.
Answer that, right?
It's already a non-conforming, it's an extension of a non-conforming lot.
Which, and this one, this one doesn't mention that either.
What's that?
What's this?
That's a septic.
Well, that's really septic, that's...
I know, it was.
The septic is not conforming, the shed, our house is not conforming, but we're not adding on to the...
By sixteen, twelve and sixteen, something like that?
So no permit required for that, so there's no variance on that, right? That was, it was bought by us fourteen years ago, yeah. So no variance, how you know of? Not that I know of, no, but I haven't looked into that.
I think you can call it a lot.
It's a shed, yeah.
Yeah, like, if there's variance on that, I think we could still sneak under the same...
On the same plot?
But, I don't think it is.
I don't think they should connect.
We bought fourteen years ago when I was there.
So you, there's no way you can find out?
There's no variance at all.
You get, it's a side, it's meant to be to us whatever it is, for the shed.
I mean, the reality, the reality, too, is if that shed's already there, the, the... No?
No, because there's no...
The setback's already noted, it's pre-existing, they already...
Pre-existing from the white, no?
Before the, before the, this is getting, this is getting wild.
But the shed's not...
It's immovable, you can move the shed.
It's an accessory building that doesn't have a setback.
It didn't need a permit to be there.
It's under two hundred square feet, so there's no permit required. No? I think we've run into this before, but I think we could hear it, and continue the meeting, re-advertize it, and do, you'll do the next meeting.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's wrong, hey, I think we have done this a bunch of times, but it just sucks to have to re-advertize it until it happens.
Agreed. But we gotta protect ourselves.
Yeah, no question, yeah.
So could you, for my purposes, make a decision based on what you know it is gonna be, or no? My issue is, now I have to wait to get my next set of plans.
Yeah, well...
So, actually, let me ask you this.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't think that's necessary, I think the only thing, this is what you're saying.
No, I don't, you just need to correct it.
You just need to send this, we need to repost that corrected.
I, I, I get it, I totally get what you're saying.
Yes.
I think she's, what she's saying is, can we approve it, re-advertize it during the twentieth, she has to wait anyway, and if someone comes up to her, you know, and says, we have a problem with this...
I don't think we can.
I don't think we can vote on something greater than what's already been advertised.
Okay, so can I...
Cause the assumption is that people would have come to the meeting because they, right? Like, even though they went in...
We talked to a bunch of the neighbors, and they, you know, they were fine.
But we didn't talk to everyone.
Yeah. Can you approve the addition without the mudroom until next month, so we can move forward with plans, at least for the addition?
So, where's, where's the mudroom?
The mudroom is twenty-three point...
The mudroom is what gets us out of that.
Twenty-three point two, which is then...
The mudroom will be even with the, see this here, twenty-three, on this side will be twenty-three. Not counting the mudroom.
Twenty-five, so, yeah.
Yeah, really.
And they can pass it tonight, and they can have to come back and go for the mudroom.
Just so we can move forward, you know, if it was approved with building plans, cause that's gonna be a process.
I mean, the, I mean, the mudroom would then have to be a separate application for a separate variance.
Right.
Which, that's unpleasant.
If, if you keep it the way it is, and we correct that...
We just made a purchase, so, put...
So if you keep it the way it is, and we re-advertize it, actually, in thirty days, so it's the next meeting. You'd not try to lose the mudroom? No, not if it has to be, yeah, not if we can redo and start another commission. So we'll wait for thirty days. So you, I think if we hear, we can hear it tonight, continue it, re-advertize it. Forty A, with forty A, it says, if any or other adequate identification of the location of the, so this is for notification purposes, if any or other of the area or premises which is subject of the petition, the date, time, and place of the public hearing, the subject matter of the hearing, and the nature of action or relief requested. So the relief requested is a variance, I don't know how...
The relief requested is a variance of thirty point five feet.
I, I'm just, again, I hate to see, I'm a clerical error up there. I agree, yeah, I know everyone's in the same boat, but...
Yeah, but again, if someone misses it...
I don't see them come back on appeal either, but...
That's, yeah.
So how would that work, would you guys discuss it tonight, and do like a... So you wanna move forward with mudroom and all that, just re-advertize it? I think we can, we can hear it tonight.
So, is anyone advertising?
What's that?
Who re-advertizes it?
Yeah, yeah. Dead.
So we can go forward with this?
Wait, the right, the right number?
No. No, I mean, what we have not discussed at all, what we're talking about right now, is what we can and cannot approve. What we're not discussing is whether or not there's a hardship and all that, so we've gotten there.
That seems like the most basic math there.
Their hardship right here, they can't put it anywhere on the lot except there, because Peter's side of that is, we're the septic system, and that's who holds for the road, and this is the only part that they can...
If you were helping in this one, you'd try to break these letters.
Yeah.
I know.
What are we doing?
Perfect, good job, this is perfect.
All right, I mean, there's a couple of things, right? The first one is the advertisement, the second one is what the hardship would be, that would be figured out, that comes later, but that would be probably a conversation now to have. We can do like an onsite, and look at it in April, and that's all reasonable.
But I think at this point, we can hear the petition, that gets corrected, and...
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think we've been through this, we've been through something like this before, where we re-advertize, and we will do the same petition on the eighth, right?
As soon as you know my name coming in.
We're nineteen, I think we've seen people re-advertizing, come back, right?
Different cases.
I haven't, in my two, but, I mean, that was hardly the key for already.
It's, and it's a lot of times, it's like, that's, it's, they, they realize they need to ask for something that they didn't...
All right.
I don't think there's any reason we can't have a hearing, man.
No, I'm, I agree. So what are you looking at? So would this, like, we continue now, would this be a conditional, like, approval, or, you know, based on that, or do we have to start with all of our...
You have to do the whole thing with it?
The hearing, everything, or what's the point? No, it's just, it's just re-advertize, there's no new petition or anything like that, just... But we come back in April, or no? Yes. So we can hear it tonight, and you might get a general vibe, we can't make a decision... Okay, well, just in case anyone wants to come in as a...
After.
Well, you would advertise it the right way, and we'll discuss it tonight, and see what, what's going on.
So what's the other one?
Does he have to wait, the little one?
Correct, fifteen and a half. I don't know.
Yeah, it's from fifty to fifteen and a half.
And a half, yeah.
Fifty and a half, that's, makes sense for the moment.
Yeah, I didn't see that on the letter.
No.
Yeah, the letter talked about what the relief you needed, not what you needed for a setback, it should have just said fifteen and a half.
Fifteen and a half, and that's all. All right.
Okay. So you're looking at doing in-law? So we're looking at doing in-law, going down to fifteen point five feet to the side of, yeah. Obviously, there's nowhere else on the property we could put this, septic's in that lot, there's a pool behind that, so let's see. So the septic's back here?
This is the septic. This is the D box.
What's on...
What's on this side of the property?
That's the front, so our driveway comes in here, so this is the front of the property, so right here is the, that's the front, that's the furnace porch, on the front, so it'd be over there.
Too close to that.
I mean, they've got the front end still in it.
It's not getting close to the road there, so...
Yeah, on both sides of the road, there are two sides, this one here and that one right there.
And off the back of the house, that's part of the septic, it looks like?
Yeah, the septic comes out, and the line comes out like right here, so there's a pool here, and then that would get us closer to the logline here.
Where was the pool, did you say?
Pool's right here.
Yeah, so... The in-law, I'm trying, the in-law's, first... Am I looking at the wrong thing?
Nope, this is the in-law.
Oh, okay.
So this is all, and the driver's here.
Okay, oh, this is the, this is the whole thing.
Yeah.
So the shared living space is, is there a key?
This living room here, this wall...
So it's all open?
Yeah, it's all open. It's part of the front, it's a...
Oh, yeah, it kind of separates past the kitchen, then?
Yeah.
You guys have a shared utilities, and...
We have a shared laundry. Utilities is shed? Yep.
The work, it's a common area that's gonna be in here?
It's, uh...
It's in the, what's this one?
It's right here, it's the, the window of the existing part of the house, um, this is currently a bedroom here, so that will get, you know, redone for laundry, this wall will come down with a beam above it, so that'll be the shared space. So on the front elevation, if I have this right, this is, is this the house? Yes.
The relative, it's a, it's a, um, a relative of one of you, one of the owners in the, the in-law that's in the land?
My mother.
And it's not gonna be converted into income-producing apartment? I'm just reading off the bio, I'm making sure we count. Just checking off the boxes, so I don't get yelled at.
And rent it to your kids.
You're not gonna sell it, that's a tool?
Yeah, right, it happens, it happens. It'll be enough to do once.
So what is the pleasure of all of it?
Your kids?
Do you wanna do it onsite, tell them, no, no?
Can you do the pictures, I just...
So the hardship, the hardship would be that they have two front edges, they would have to get fifty feet setback from two sides.
Two sides.
And the only area that would be within the fifty feet, which would be here, and here, is the septic tank. Is there any, I'm just asking to check off more boxes, so is, is there any roll, or any wet lens, or anything on the property that would help make that...
You already have a non-conforming lot.
Correct, yeah. It's pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
It's not bothering anybody, they're not gonna be three and a half gateways either.
So wait, so...
Yeah, and there's, I don't, there's no way to attach it to the house and have it be fifty feet off the two side, the front setbacks that you have, and not be, have to move a financially unreasonable septic tank, to another point, so...
Wait, so, wave the onsite? Want to wave it?
Yes.
On second?
Yes.
Probably are you, yeah, yes?
Yes.
My thought, yes, five to zero, we waved it onsite, so if we correct the language that's written on anything by next month, we could...
Take them on.
And then, would you like to add to this, though?
No, I feel bad if there's a mistake there, so they have to come back.
It's gonna save the promises that we wanted to make.
Protect you and protect us, because we don't wanna...
What's, what's off of that Larry Avenue, is there any, are there houses off of there?
There's a house here, and a house here.
And there's also the whole...
And then this is, this house that's here, that, that's Doris Road.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But there's only two houses.
And for those houses, just, just, are there any, are those non-conforming lots, too?
Yeah, they're all, they're all much the same lot, yeah.
And how is the setbacks of their houses close, similar?
Probably similar, I don't know, I think we're the only one with an addition, or...
Would it be similar to the fifteen or the twenty-one, or would it be similar to, would it be a fifty-foot setback off of those streets?
No.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think any of them are fifty feet.
Well, it looks like you're a guy across the street's on the kiddie porch there.
Yeah.
Okay, just more reason to make it reasonable to...
Your kids.
Do you want to do it onsite until? No, no.
Can you do the pictures I just got?
The hardship the hardship would be that they have two front edges. They would have to get fifty feet setback from two sides.
Two sides.
And the only area that would be within the fifty feet, which would be here and here, is the septic tank. Is there any? I'm just asking to check off more boxes. So is there any roll or any wet lens or anything on the property that would help make that inch turn?
You already have a non-conforming lot.
Correct, yeah. Go ahead. Seems pretty reasonable.
Yeah.
It's not bothering anybody. They're not going to be three and a half feet either.
So wait.
Yeah, and there's I don't there's no way to attach it to the house and have it be fifty feet off the two side, the front setbacks that you have and not be have to move a financially unreasonable septic tank to another point, so.
Wait, so wave the onsite? Wanting to wave it?
Yeah.
Yes.
On second?
Yes.
Probably are you. Yes.
Yes.
My thought is yes. Five to zero. We waved it onsite, so if we correct the language that's written on anything by next month, we could
Make them work.
And then would you like to add to this though?
No. I feel bad because there's a mistake there, so they have to come back.
I mean
It's gonna save the promises that we wanted to make.
Protect you and protect us because we don't want
What's what's off of that Larry Avenue? Is there any? Either houses off of there or?
There's a house here and a house here.
And there's also the whole
And then this is this house that's here that that's Doris Road.
Oh, okay, yeah. And for those houses, just just are there any of those non-conforming lots too?
Yeah, they're all they're all much the same lot, yeah.
And how is the setbacks of their houses close? Similar?
No.
Probably similar. I think we're the only one with an addition.
Would it be similar to the fifteen or the twenty-one or would it be similar to would it be a fifty-foot setback off of those streets?
No.
That's yeah.
Yeah, I don't think any of them are fifty feet.
Well, it looks like you're guy across the street's on the kiddie porch there.
Yeah.
Just more reason to make it reasonable to issue a demand.
I will make a motion to continue this meeting until April eighth.
I'll make a motion to continue petition number
Nine. Nine ninety-eight.
Nine ninety-eight to April eighth at seven five, seven fifteen? I think I already said, did I already say seven? I think yeah.
Ah, seventeen.
Ten?
Ten?
Seven, ten.
Second? Anybody?
Yes.
Thanks.
Do you know?
Huh?
That's obvious.
Yes.
Continuation until next one. Now we get to the next one.
Next one and last one.
Would you like me to write up a new, you know, letter for Danielle to advertise or just adjust the go with her outlet or?
Yeah.
I think they can ask for whatever they want to.
If it's just an advertising, that's it.
Oh, great. Full paragraph. Thanks, guys. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on March eleventh in the selected green room on the application submitted by Maureen Plansey for a special permit to construct a twelve-hundred-square-foot garage to be located at five thirteen Thompson Street, Halifax. A variance for the front setback from Thompson Street will also be required. The applicant is looking for forty-two feet instead of the required fifty feet. The project will be a violation of bylaw one sixty-seven twelve F one. No garage or barn should be located near and fifty feet to the front lot line. It's measured for one sixty-seven eleven and one sixty-seven twelve F four. No garage or barn should have a ground floor four square feet without a special property zone residential and petition number nine ninety-nine.
Like a basic for me.
We're gonna have to suffer you and the cheaters.
That's what we give you.
Joe Webby, Webby Engineering. With me is Maureen and Mike. What they would like, they live at five thirteen Thompson Street. And they would like to build a garage, twelve-hundred-square-foot garage. We had gone to the conservation to get a notice under notice of intent. And originally, we had the the proposed garage being fifty feet from the the border of vegetated wetland. The conservation commission asked us to move it eight feet. And then they said that they would write a letter to you people, which I have here, hoping that you would grant this variance because of the topography or the closeness of the the wetlands. So they asked, they're actually asking us
Best I've ever seen in here. Ask her here.
To allow the forty-two feet. The twelve-hundred square feet under the special permit, I'll let Mike talk on that. That that's basically what we would like to do is this is the the letter from conservation. I think it was they sent an email to the to the appeals board.
What number Thompson Street do you want?
Five thirteen.
So your pink line is the fifty fifty-foot mark?
Yeah, the pink line is fifty.
That's her house?
Yeah, the Fifty and a hundred. So they have granted this point that we're looking at now is we have an order of conditions from the conservation. So we knew we had to go to them first before we came to you.
The slopes off a few feet.
Yes, it matters.
Yeah, the yard's very odd topography wise. It's got the big mound of dirt that's finished with the garage. Existing garage is really small and it kind of goes downhill and then angles like down towards the back. And there's already some runoff. We're gonna try to get rid of or help the wetlands with some gravel in front of the existing proposed garage to help some runoff that goes down by the old barn that's there that we're gonna take down. That's rotted and falling down.
Is that where the oranges?
What's that?
Is that where the oranges?
Oranges, I think the existing sheds and things that are both coming out.
Yeah, this one's already been taken out.
Yeah, the shed the shed already been taken out.
It's already further back from the garage.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Does the shed go to seventy-two or is it eighty for the barn?
Yes, it will, yeah.
The size of the lot is twenty-eight thousand?
The size of the lot is a little over twenty-eight thousand.
So it's already not
Pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Lot of those tonight.
Yeah, the house is way closer than fifty feet existing. And the house is still further forward than what we're proposing for the front of the additional garage. The house is about thirty-eight feet off the street, I think. No, yeah, about thirty-three hundred thirty feet. You walk them walking it off. I wouldn't take me to that long.
What are you gonna do with the garage?
Um, let's try to get the stuff out of the yard. I have a race car that I'm always working on with building. It's always broken. And she got her brother's car. He passed away from ALS. And it's just been sitting in her his widow's yard. And we bought it from her to try to bring it back to life. That's just sitting off in the side yard. We can't put it anywhere. What's that?
Trailer.
Yeah, we have a trailer. Just trying to get the stuff out of the yard and kind of put everything. We have the snow blowers, the stuff for the kids, the go-karts. All these things in the barn, it's falling down. So I'm just trying to build it and put it all in one spot where I can work on things, work on my own stuff, keep it quiet for the neighbors and it's inside of all one building.
Not gonna be used for a business or anything like that?
No, absolutely not, no.
You gonna have run and water?
No, nope, no water.
The electricity and heat? Can I have heat?
No, no heat. Not right now. I mean, I don't I don't plan on doing heat in the future, but you'll want heat. I do have a garage. I rent a garage down in Bedford right now with no heat, so.
The race car can get out of the other garage and I don't have to clean the snow off my car. As the water
No way to want
Where's five thirteen?
She pulled up a picture. It looks familiar, but I can't I can't picture.
It's where you put the hard juice. The hard juice are setback.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're on the job of conservation and the the crime involved are right behind us.
Like two houses over from the box.
Was where they just split the land for the last few years, right? Built two new houses, one setback. So are you two?
That's across the street, I think.
Okay.
I think that was across the street.
This is my parents' house. They both passed away during COVID and before, well, it's my stepfather, but he was with us since I was little, so he's more my dad. But it was his parents' house too. So they bought the house in sixty and then my parents bought off them in two thousand and five.
And it looks way better than that picture now. We spent like thousands of dollars, roof and cutters and
So you bought the Hagerland? You bought the Hagerland?
Yeah.
I think it's in the back.
It's in the back because the bogs are right behind us.
Long driveway.
Yeah, so that's the first house. It went like this.
It kind of goes out like this, yeah. Yeah. It looks okay because of vinyl siding, but that whole front wall, I can take it and push it in if I wanted to. It's really
Yeah, but the primary bogs, we can see from the woods when there's nothing trees.
The kids hit it with a little mini go-kart and the kids hit the front of it and the whole thing did one of these, the whole front of the barn. So we had to take that thing down.
So is it, what's the difference between the side setback now? You got plenty.
We can keep forty-two feet from the side.
Yeah.
So we've got plenty of room.
You know, some trees.
Your neighbors
It's just trees, yeah, it's a bunch of trees. We want to keep a few up with take, there's a couple that are like rotted that are gonna fall down that have to come out.
Yeah.
And then a few that are near the barn now that I want to take out that are big and they're kind of leaning toward the house. For safety, take those out before I start the garage construction.
You're putting a stick building on that one?
Stick, yeah, that's yeah, regular wood. Vinyl siding to match the house. Same trim, same doors.
Do you have a second floor in there?
No, of the new of the additional garage.
The new garage?
Yeah, no. There's four foot walls that can put this and have like a stack, like those doors lifts inside.
What's the pleasure of the board?
You'll see it when you go home today.
Well, it's kind of dark now. Everybody driving.
I'll put the light on for you. I'll leave the light on for you. Not that simple. Yeah, so we're plenty of feet off the side, right? Then we're not even near the neighbor, like forty-seven feet, I think, right?
Yeah, thirty.
Yeah, yeah, we got plenty of ground.
So you sure your neighbor had gone to
Was advertised right? I'm a student.
I didn't know, put the door up, but they're not here, so guessing they don't mind.
What's the pleasure of the board?
How large is the Obedo?
I was gonna do ten by ten, actually. Ten by ten, if that's okay?
It just can't be any higher than twelve.
I don't want a twelve-foot door. That's like a that's like a in front of a, yeah, it's a big thing. Nine by seven. I wanted to say I would do a ten by ten. And if you guys say yes to ten by ten, I can always do smaller.
As long as it's long, it's not
Yeah, yeah. They're expensive, so I might even do a nine by seven after I start construction and it starts snowballing and uh real expensive.
You want twelve, that's what we were talking about, that the
Yeah, twelve feet, yeah, I'm way under twelve feet, yeah.
Nine by eight, you want the eight for the trim.
Yeah, exactly. I'm gonna back it in, yeah, that's the plan. Get everything out of the yard. It gets by the side yard again.
Knock it down, this little this little shed.
The sheds are It was just falling and then the kids, oh, I'm like
You having a bonfire? You having a bonfire?
Yeah.
Can you talk to your butters?
I have not.
I have not, no.
But it's a street that's not really a butter-friendly street, like
Yeah, it's not bad. Like I talk to Ted once in a while.
Yeah, I help the guy show the driveway at the end, you know, the really heavy stuff.
So you're like, hey, don't show up. I'll help you out.
That's twelve feet.
Yeah, like the end, the heavy stuff. Like I was done, he was almost done. I'm like, oh, that's still worse. I was like, let me just go out on top. He's like, you don't have to do that. I'm like, I don't mind.
The garage isn't gonna be larger than the house, right?
Uh, no, not even close.
Just checking off that.
Yeah. It's not gonna be taller. It's not gonna be taller than the house, but it's gonna be taller than the garage that's next to it. But the actual main part of the house is taller than what the garage I'm gonna build.
On site?
I drive by. Everybody's adding basketball.
Have you noticed how clear it looks from before? The bushes are gone. It's clean.
Yeah.
I'm just kidding.
The landscape looks terrible though. I saw like tractor marks in the front yard from the back home and
My parents were older and unhealthy and didn't have a lot of money, so a lot of stuff went unmaintained, but I'm trying to fix that.
Anybody want to make a motion to waive the onsite of the
I'm gonna go, yeah. Motion, I'll say, I don't know, I'm just doing that.
Who's making the motion?
Peter.
She's second. She made it. Yes.
Yes.
It passes. Uh, what's the who wants to make a motion for this for the permit?
So I I think that there are similar garages in that section of town that we improved. There's that one on Pratt Street we approved a couple of years back.
Right down the street.
It's pretty still, big steel building down the street on the corner over there too.
Smith just put up on three categories too.
Yeah, so there it is not unusual to have a garage of that size. I also think the letter from the conservation commission and just the the topography of the land makes it that they could have actually fit it within the setbacks, but they were they were asking for the variance to try and protect wetlands. So I think that the variance is very reasonable to to grant some of them. So I'll make a motion as presented to approve petition nine ninety-nine.
Restrictions? No, no business, that's
Yeah.
That's obviously an I L R.
She's not wrong.
Anybody second it?
I'll say.
On favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
We're finishing on a good note today.
Yes.
If you ever need your car fixed.
Be careful. You got it. You're gonna need to find my car in your front yard.
Do we have bills to sign?
We need to sign.
Any hard to sign or we get something to mail?
You'll get twenty days, you get a letter.
Is it twenty day period?
Yep.
You'll get some.
Twenty, you can put like the butters and stuff, is that okay? Okay, awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Hope you have a nice day. My mother's gonna walk and be like, hey, I'm gonna go garage. Maybe after I have a swit off, I'll leave. She's like, he's so nice. She's gonna say, I'm like, no, I'm not doing that.
Thank you. Right, and that's that's what I've always found in life, like build the biggest foundation, do that the first time, because I can always
Do we have any bills to sign? Immediate approval.
Did you already sign it?
No, I just
All right, all right. I'm just making sure you're reading what you're signing down there, Tina.
She's signing to you.
Yeah, right. I'm gonna throw some of my bills in there if you sign this stuff.
How do you like Halifax?
Can I start on the record? Are we recording?
She might want to wait, yeah.
We won't see on YouTube a few weeks early.
Yeah, right.
No, I keep my quiet. No, everything's been great. Trying to read through this, it's a little a little pressing at times, but I mean, that's that's every town.
Do you want a motion for this?
Yes.
To approve this? I'll make a motion to approve ninety dollars for petition nine ninety-nine and ninety dollars for petition number nine ninety-eight bills. Somebody wants a second.
Second.
On favor?
Yes.
All right, passes. That was painless.
Hellfire.
I just said to him, going up is always cheaper than going out.
You didn't know how to site work it out.
So that didn't hold a lot of water in my book. I was a little irritated.
Because of them?
I'm just I'm just saying because I know with the construction trade, going up costs less than going out. I understand that they may have other issues. But it's not a monetary thing to go up first and go out.
Well, they they're concerned about the kid.
About the safety.
Yeah, safety.
If you look at the plan, there's not even a bedroom for the child.
It's lower than extended?
That's gonna get a little bit more. Keep that reeled in, Chairman. I don't know how you're gonna do that.
I don't know.
What do you think?
Three three foot is a hell of a bearing task for I've never seen something like that, granted, that wasn't pre-existing, non-conforming, just being rebuilt in place. That that's a lot. That's a big ask.
There's no hardship there, you know, there isn't.
No, I mean, I had them in my office asking what we can do for a hardship. I had the butters in my office asking what can we do to never allow this to happen?
It doesn't always happen. At least it's been up front.
It's about three and a half feet from the lot line, that's
I'll be very honest, it exists, like
It does exist.
No, it exists very usually very close to like lakes and stuff when you have those bolded cottages.
Yeah, like there's definitely
Especially around that area, so they don't have that much leeways when it comes to
Especially with Madison Street down, I mean
Yeah.
Yeah, like real close.
My figure of concern was the fire that she was speaking of, but she said they were like ten feet off their lot line. So even ten and three, you're gonna you're gonna have more than a ten-foot fire separation district, which is they change the way the guy has to build the house, but I think he's outside of that line anyhow. But that's that's still very I wouldn't want my neighbor to be there.
I asked if Dan
That I could talk out against them, but
If she could get us the septic plan before we go to the onsite, just so we can see what the septic actually is.
Yeah.
I would love to know where the septic really is.
It's gonna get bitter.
Yeah, because it has
It's gonna get gross.
I don't think it could be anywhere, but where they're telling you it is.
No, no, it's true, but you know, we've got to explore our options on a tiny lot like that when you're encroaching, just to watch out to a neighbor. Like we've got to make sure we've explored every option for where they could put this.